Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, July 12th, 2021. A call to the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present, including the city administrator and city clerk. With that, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the pledge of allegiance. The flag is located over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item four, general. Just a reminder that music in the parking lot at Dyer Library and Saco Museum happens this week. It's looking like it's going to be a sunny day, so bring your lawn chairs and your good times. With that, we are also letting everyone know that starting July 18th, there will be Jubilee Park. There'll be music series on Sunday evenings at Jubilee Park. At this time, is there any committee correspondence from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. Just like to let everybody know that starting July 24th, the Dyer Library is once again going to be hosting their giant book sale. And also at the Saco Museum, they have a new addition to the consignment shop, excuse me, to the gift shop called Consignment Treasures. So if you haven't stopped by the museum lately, please stop by and check out the new items that they have, as well as this new location and area for some consignment treasures.
Thank you very much. Any further committee correspondence to council? Moving on to public comment. We have several folks signed up for a public comment tonight. Up first is David Plaven. Again, please make sure to state your name and address for the record in three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Plaven, Libertus Surf Street in Saco. I am also the vice chairman of the Saco Shoreline Commission and vice president of SOS Saco Bay. We're currently awaiting the data from the latest coastal mapping done by the Maine Geological Survey, but it doesn't take a scientist to see the erosion along our shoreline, in particular Campella Beach. Over the past two years, the visible loss of sand ranges from six to eight feet, and we're left with no defense against the rage of the ocean's waves. There have been high surf advisories three times in the tourist season. Tropical storm made its way into the Gulf of Maine last week, and again advisories were up. Splash over in the summer is very rare, but we've already seen it twice. The current situation is best described as an accident waiting to happen. I'm urging you to look for anything we can do to provide protection from storms until a project partnership agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers is in hand. I'm aware there's only so much you can do, but ask that you press every button at your disposal, especially influence and status. One such opportunity is a request made by Saco Shoreline Commissioner Rick Millard for York County to purchase a dredge. A dredge would enable us to relocate sand to the badly affected areas. The county has $40 million from the American Rescue Plan, and they ask us for 3.75% of that sum to positively impact far more than 3.75% of the county's residents and related economies. Our county commissioner has been lukewarm to the request, but there seemed to be support from the commission when Rick and SOS Saco Bay officials spoke at public hearings. We need to do everything in our power to make this happen. We could also look at the federal government's infrastructure package. If it passes, we could ask for a sand dump, and the dredge in 2019 brought us some temporary relief. With greater quantity and more coarse sand, it could last longer and provide a bridge until we can get a barrier built to decrease the wave power caused by the jetty. Over the past two years, we've developed a very strong coalition of government officials, environmental experts, and economic planners to get something done. Mayor Doyle has made this a top priority, and along with city administrator Ken Rath and the unanimous support of this council, plus the passage of legislation that enjoins the state, we are closer than ever to a resolution. But be reminded, it has now been 14 years since the federal government appropriated $26.9 million, and we have nothing to show for it. For a project that cannot wait, that is far too long and has left us on the brink of a potential disaster, we can't dodge bullets forever. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Up next, we have Sue Littlefield.
Hi, I'm Sue Littlefield, 171 Simpson Road. You know, I've spent a lot of time in front of the council over the years speaking against contract zones being used in the rural residential area. So here I am again. I did put a letter in the packet a few weeks ago. I'm not going to reread it, but my main point was, when you live in a neighborhood, you have no way to protect the uniqueness of your neighborhood from incursions like contract zones. We don't need institutions. We don't need loud entertainment. We, you know, it's not part of the neighborhood. But I was really interested a few weeks ago. I was reading the Press Herald, and this problem is happening all over the place. A woman from East Bayside was complaining about nightclubs in her residential neighborhood. I have a lot of sympathy with her. But there was one phrase in this letter that really hit me. This all makes me wonder, is my neighborhood for its residents or only for the people who don't live there? I think that she put it really succinctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Up next is Inga Brown.
Hi, good evening. My name is Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road, and I have just a couple comments this evening related to the final and second reading on the Riverwinds Contract Zone Amendment. I have had correspondence with the city planner, as I believe the council is well aware. I was disappointed that my correspondence was not included for the public packet. If we look at the three meetings for this item, the first reading, which I believe was back in May, the public hearing on June 21st, and then this evening, I believe that the packet had some significant omissions, and there were no new documents or updates from staff for the first two meetings. I find that is problematic for public discourse and for a full discussion for the public to also be able to be part of the process. I have so many thoughts on contract zones, and I will not go into them now, but this evening before you, you really have a precedent-setting watershed decision about the rural conservation zone. And if you choose this evening to put forward fully open-to-the-public, self-sponsored events by this particular applicant, I know for me, I will mark this date of July 12th, 2021, as a turning point for Saco, and it will be extremely difficult moving forward with other applications in the rural conservation zone to say, no, this type of commercial activity is not where we see Saco going. I am very concerned about smart growth in our community. I'm very concerned about open space and what patterns and precedents we lay forward for our residents. If we opened the rural conservation zone to these public events, the traffic of pattern, the patterns of traffic, the expectations of use in the rural conservation zone are forever compromised. I would like to make a comment about the council meeting of June 28. I think it was Counselor Johnston who put forth that he would like to see all contract zones as an addendum to the ordinance. Contract zones are part of the ordinance, and citizens should be able to find contract zones and review them in detail. We have patterns of, negative patterns that are emerging from our contract zones. We have mission creep when contract zones continue to come back for amendments, and soon you have an applicant who started out with, I'll make this up, an ice cream shop, but it has now turned into a shopping mall. That's not a great example, but I think you can understand what I'm trying to say. The other issue with contract zones, especially in the rural conservation zone, is spot zoning. When we create these islands of commercial use in the rural conservation zone, that is a spot zone. That is an island of commercial use, and these are so corrosive and divisive to the neighbors and the neighborhoods who live there. I would ask you tonight to consider your vote very, very thoughtfully from the heart. Again, I think this is a watershed moment for Saco, and all of the work we've done on the comprehensive plan, all of the goals we have for our community are in jeopardy if we open the rural conservation zone to commercial, open-to-the-public events. Thank you.
Thank you, Inga. Up next is June Giuliano.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm going to keep this really short and sweet. I am owner of 401 Main Street in Saco, where we were given a contract zone. A lot of that conversation this evening. For the sole purpose of putting our salon there, Acapello Salon and Spa. And in April of, actually, March 31st of 2019, we relocated the business to 510 Main Street and turned the house back to residential, and it is now currently a residence. And so I am asking the council this evening to please consider terminating the contract zone between Acapello and the city of Saco. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Gina Martinez.
Hey there, Gina Martinez, 121 Loudon Road. I'm the event manager for Riverwinds. And members of the council, Mayor Doyle and city manager, it's been a long journey, and I appreciate the time and energy everybody has put into this quest, including Code and the planning department. I'm hopeful that we're allowed to host self-sponsored events, one of my favorites being the Holiday Open House. Brought about 175 folks to the venue, not all at once, no traffic problems, from one to four. We had a cocoa bar, a smores bar, snacks, the Thornton Academy choral singers, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, fire pits, and a horse-drawn carriage ride. We received awesome feedback about the beloved event and even made the newspaper. I understand that the public has concerns along with some misinformation, and I'm hopeful we can get past this and encourage the city oversight. We encourage city oversight if that settles the concerns. Perhaps before self-sponsored permits go to the state for approval, they can be passed by the planning office as well, just like it reads in our site plan. From May to November 15th, the planning board needs to approve anything out of the season for an event. I have mentioned previous, 21 and 22 season is fully booked with weddings and such events. We would just like the opportunity that should there be a cancellation or another wave of something and we start losing business, we have an opportunity so we don't have dead dates, we don't have unemployed staff, we can still use some of our vendors and entertainers. The Austin family has made great property improvements, both aesthetically, as requested by Code, and as requested by Code, and we have not had complaints from our immediate neighbors, with the exception of the folks at the Dark Horse property who stated someone wandered onto their property. Perhaps this was a one-time mistake, perhaps a phone call to Riverwinds could have resolved this. I'm worried about folks who keep using the words violating and operating illegally. I worked for 23 and a half years in Portland healthcare, highly regulated by both city and state. 23 and a half years, I had no financial fines or deficiencies. I hold a license in dietetics with the state of Maine, and I also owned a business in Old Orchard Beach for 13 years. Also, we had noise issues and the normal stuff that you have that comes with running a business, but I was never cited or gotten written deficiencies, business notifications. So I don't want to take it personally, but I feel that my character in running a business is stellar and in good standing with both Portland and Old Orchard and the state of Maine. So when people loosely use the words "operating illegally" or "violating," I'm taking it very personally, and I just hope that everyone understands, we've said it a million times, we did not think that replacing the weddings that postponed or canceled with an acoustic music duo was breaking any laws or zones or violating the contract zone. Contract zone red and similar events. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Up next, we have Beth Austin.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everyone in person again. I'm here tonight asking for a minor change in my contract zone agreement. We have been working on this for almost a year since Dick Lambert sent me a letter saying a music show on our outside deck replacing a wedding cancellation would not be considered a similar event, as worded in my contract zone. COVID has struck us all, causing much havoc on the economy and hurting many small businesses to the point of closing down. We are grateful things are getting back to normal. We are hosting weddings, again, our number-one source of income. We, for varying reasons, may still have a wedding cancellation, and we are a seasonal business with a short window to be successful. We are hoping to have the option to host a similar self-sponsored event, such as a comedy show or a music show on the back deck to keep our employees working. I want to thank all of our friends and neighbors that have written letters and shown us support for our small family business. I also want to thank the councilors that have been to the property and have firsthand information about how we do things there and how things are run, and hope that they have been able to share and dispel some of the rumors and misinformation that has circulated. Our family has always been very proud to be a part of the Saco community, and we have contributed over the years, sponsoring teams, starting a volleyball program at Thornton Academy. Many people enjoy our land, stopping at our beach on the river and snowmobiling on our trails, walking their dogs or riding their fat bike from Simpson Road. The Riverwinds Farm team thinks that we are taking it to the next level, building something very special here in Saco. We hope that the farm will be enjoyed by locals and tourists, and we strive to provide a classy operation where people feel safe and make lasting happy memories while also contributing to the local economy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Up next is, forgive me if I mispronounce it, but Fausto.
Fausto Pfeiffer, 12 Pepperell Square, Blue Elephant. So for me, I'm going to start March 13th, when the economy actually came to a halt and the world closed. Literally, I lost almost $1 million immediately, and if it wasn't for Riverwinds, it would have literally saved this small business from dying and leaving this state completely because I would have had to close my doors. There wasn't enough PPP, there wasn't enough RFP money coming in or any grants. The only grant I actually got from Saco was 10 grand, of which 5,000 has to be paid back. But what I did get was commitments of jobs that were taking us and keeping all of our employees completely working for the next two years, and that's what I'm here to say, that without them, I would have closed my doors as another small business. And we need to be business-friendly. And when we talk about nightclubs, nightclubs close at 1:00. Riverwinds shuts down at 10:00 on the dot. So noise ordinance, 10:00. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That is it for those that have signed up for public comment. Is there any further public comment? Moving on. I'm sorry, come on up, and just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Nancy Levesque. I live at 111 Bradley Street in Saco. And just briefly, I've lived here all of my 57 years, born, raised, raised three kids here, and I think I'm like most people in the city of Saco, and we don't really understand a lot about zoning and all of the things that she, this other, I forget her name, spoke about. But I've seen Saco grown leaps and bounds. The property at Riverwinds is a beautiful venue to expose the citizens of Saco to all of its beauty. By limiting it to just weddings, mostly being booked by people from out of state, it is not only robbing people who live here all of its has-to-offer, like Gina spoke about, but also prohibits a small business from staying in business and surviving in this tough economy. I'm proud to live in Saco. I will always live in Saco, and I'm really proud to be part of Riverwinds. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay. Moving on to item seven of the agenda, approval of the minutes for June 21st and June 28th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call vote on the minutes. Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
No.
Motion passes 6-1. That moves us to item eight of the agenda, consent items. There's one consent item. Item A, annual report filing extension. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on the consent items? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item eight, tonight's, excuse me, item nine, action items. We have several. Item A is a public hearing, a renewal application for special entertainment permit for the Bedford Saco Elks Lodge #1597 on page three on the packet. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bedford Saco Elks Lodge #1597 has applied for a renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. Governor Mills, on March 17th, 2021, signed new legislation to extend the liquor licensure period for 90 days effective with renewal starting on March 18th, 2021. This 90-day extension is based on the forced closure of in-person dining from March 18th, 2020 through June 16th, 2020. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainments, Section 93, Paragraph 2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail to open the public hearing. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0 at 6:54 PM. If there's anybody who would like to speak on this item, renewal application for special entertainment permit for Bedford Saco Elks Lodge #1597, please come forward. Seeing nobody coming forward, Counselor Gunn.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Bedford Saco Elks Lodge #1597 for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 6:55 PM. That brings us to item B of action items. That's a public hearing, Chapter 81, conveyance of city-owned property, Declair parcels, and that is Counselor McPhail on page five in the packet.
Thank you. On July 23rd, 2018, the city council approved the purchase of 841 to 853 Portland Road, known as the Claire Parcels, with the intent of building a new industrial park. The cost of the parcels totaled $677,455. Since the purchase of these properties, the city has completed a wetland delineation of the property and submitted an inquiry to the EDA regarding grant funding for building a new road into the property. However, since there were still parcels available within the Millbrook Business Park and new parcels being created on Phillips Spring Road, developing this area into a new business industrial park for the city has not been a top priority over the past two years. In January of 2021, the city adopted a market analysis and action plan matrix completed by Camion Associates. This plan directly addressed the question of expanding city business, industrial parks based on data and economic trends and forecasts. The market analysis found that the supply of industrial space in the region continues to be limited, and the demand for that type of space is moderate. There are growth opportunities in the cross-section of logistics and manufacturing. However, this demand is not significant enough to justify an expansion of Saco's business parks, considering the availability of privately-owned sites on the market currently. Therefore, the recommendation is to focus on attracting businesses within the opportunity sectors to expanding park properties. Do not expand park properties, do not expand business parks, or dedicate resources to attracting amenities to the park. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its June 15th, 2021, meeting. The board voted 4 to 0 to forward a positive recommendation for the sale of lots as outlined in Chapter 81 of the city code. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail to open the public hearing, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 6:57 PM. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, Chapter 81, conveyance of city-owned property for the Claire Parcels, please come forward and be heard.
Mayor Doyle and council members, my name is Jane Karen, Board 5, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco, and I want to put out to you a request that the council consider the critical need for a new school location, a possible fire department location, and other needs that the city may have, and resolve those concerns prior to the sale of these properties. The city, I think, needs to collaborate very closely with all departments, public safety, school committee, as well as the economic department and planning department, to be certain that all areas are covered before making informed decisions that may be critical to the future of Saco. Otherwise, the decision to sell these parcels may prove to be very shortsighted. So that information, I think, needs to be readily available to the citizens, that research information, and this needs to be done prior to any sale. This would apply to the Claire parcel as well as the Phillips Spring Road parcel. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
Hello, council. Mr. Mayor. Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. First off, welcome. I think about five of you, two of you are new, and three were only on the dais two, three months, right? So I sympathize, but now I'm here to talk at least to, actually, this will be the three I've will be the three items for public hearing. I won't bore you on all three, but to what Jane had said, on the Phillips, this, and also the emergency use for the schools, all the same message, the message is the same, that we need to be cautious, patient. I'm not against eventually selling that land, but I don't know if the public and everyone here knows that on Wednesday night, the school board votes for, to have a school construction committee. And yes, I happen to be a name on that list, and I hope it gets approved. And almost immediately, if it does get approved, we need to take an inventory of what the city has. Because Saco, even though it has a lot of open space, say, out west of Turnpike, it's not school conducive. We have limited land. And also, when you have inventory, you also have leverage, in case you have to go buy land. So we shouldn't be going right at selling land. Now, this is a proper process. I'm not against the process, but when the city goes out and buys land, it's not a short-term endeavor. We're not there to flip, okay? We're there to plan, do site work, do wetlands, go see what federal government can offer up, or other governments can, state can offer up for us, and then make decisions. But those are more like five or 10-year. But right now, we have an emergency. I thank the EDC for the emergency use. Make sure that's emergency when you get to that vote, of schools in the industrial parks. These properties, these other two properties aren't technically in the industrial parks, or they're industrial area. And I'm not saying that these two would be the top choice. I'm not saying that at all. But to have enough to make a choice, to actually have options, is going to be critical. Now, how long is this inventory or decision going to last? I hope it's this calendar year, that at least we've decided where we're going to put that school. So this delay or tabling or voting to see what's out there, but not make that final sale yet, however that's worded, I just ask for time and the patience to look ahead for the benefit of the city. And again, one more thank you to, for, to the school board, the new superintendent, staff on both sides of the school and the city, who really looks like we're really coming together. So if we could just launch this the right, patient way, be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on this item, the conveyance of city-owned property, Claire Parcels? Seeing nobody seeking recognition. Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the fighting, final reading for July 26th, 2021.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Councilor Berman?
Mr. Mayor, in response to the comments from Ms. Karen and Mr. Roach, we ask the city administrator to poll city department heads, as well as the schools, about potential uses they envision for these properties, and have that information in our packet for the next meeting and the final reading.
The city administrator has taken notice of your request.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilor Hatch?
I would just like to add one comment to Councilor Berman's. I agree with his comment. Can we have them all in the same room at the same time, so there can be a healthy exchange? And I would like to have some sort of record of that conversation before I have to cast a vote, because I do agree with the comments that were made this evening.
Any further discussion?
Might as well add my name to that list as well. So you have three out of seven counselors that are interested in that information.
I think the city administrator has taken notice of your request. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands raised. Roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. That brings us to item C, a public hearing, Chapter 81, conveyance of city-owned property, Phillips Spring, Phillips Spring Road, on page 36 in the packet. Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city is considering whether to convey two of the four parcels created when the planning board approved the Spring Hill Industrial Park Expansion Plan on 7/9/19. As described in the planning board park expand, excuse me, as described in the planning board approval, the Spring Hill Industrial Park Expansion, Phillips Spring Road, has a project area of approximately 42 acres. The parcel is to create a total of four lots, one of which is designed for the new public works facility, and others were, are proposed to be sold at future dates for the development purposes. The lots proposed for sale are lots two and three, because they are currently buildable lots with frontage on Phillips Spring Road. These lots are between 5.4 acres and 6 acres in area. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its June 15th, 2021 meeting. The board voted four zero to forward a positive recommendation for the sale of the lots as outlined in Chapter 81 of the city code. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at 7:06 PM. Those wishing to speak on the conveyance of city-owned property for Phillips Spring Road, please come forward and be heard.
Thank you for hearing me, Jane Karen, Board Five, on Lincoln Street in Saco. And I just wanted to be certain that as public record, that this is noted, that it's important that a collaborative meeting with all departments, public safety, school board, as well as the planning department and economic development department, all meet to be certain what the future of these properties might be to the city of Saco prior to a decision to sell the property. So very much like I spoke for Claire, I just wanted, the Claire property, I wanted to make certain that was clear for this property as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Public comment? Seeing nobody seeking recognition. Councilor McPhail?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the final reading for July 26th, 2021.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at 7:08 PM. Brings us to item D, a public hearing, zoning ordinance amendment, request to terminate contract zone at 401 Main Street. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. The owners of the property at 401 Main Street request that the contract zone agreement that allowed a personal services businesses to be operated by Acapella Salon Incorporated be terminated. Just as contract zone represents an amendment to the zoning ordinance, the proposed termination is also an amendment to the ordinance for which city council review and approval is necessary. Contract zone was approved by the council on January 17th, 2006. Acapella was open at this location until 2019, when the business moved to 510 Main Street. With the termination, zoning would return to the underlying adjacent medium-density residential zone. Article 165H states, H Status of Amendments, amendments to the zoning map, and this chapter made under this section may be amended or repealed by the city council. Staff supports the termination. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch to open the public hearing on request to terminate contract zone at 401 Main Street. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at 7:10. Those wishing to speak on the request to terminate contract zone at 401 Main Street, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight here at the city council. I'm here to speak on behalf of my client, Trinity Episcopal Church, and Father Dave Dollzel, who is here tonight, is the rector of the church. Many of you know me in another capacity, but in this case, I'm both a parishioner of the church and its legal counsel, and I had the good fortune to have my children baptized in Trinity Episcopal. It's a wonderful community. Reading your packet, you might think that this is quite a simple matter, that this is a simple request to revert to historic zoning. And in part, that's true. What's omitted, and I'm not sure why staff has not fully fleshed this out, but I'll try to do so relatively quickly for you, is that there actually were important city interests that were advanced by this contract zone agreement. Now, I know it's mantra in the city these days to eliminate contract zones or to be adverse to contract zones. However, this property was one of those rare cases where a contract zone actually made terrific sense. Back in 2004, 2005, this was essentially an unused, large, historic home, extremely expensive to heat and maintain, and my memory was, it was vacant. Along came June Giuliano, who actually had an incredibly insightful idea, and she executed on it brilliantly. She came to the city and said, you know what? These old homes aren't going to make it in Saco. No one, save for Warren Buffett, can heat these places. No one can pay the carrying costs on these places. But if you let me run it as a business, a sympathetic reuse, then these old homes can be potentially saved, improved. And June Giuliano followed up with that. She purchased the property, and she immediately set to improve it. I don't know if you remember, but it got a fresh coat of paint. Improvements were made on the outside, the exterior, and a parking lot was put in. So what was a white elephant became actually quite a lovely property. The preservation of these old homes is advanced by this particular contract zone. That isn't a June Giuliano interest. It's not a Trinity Church interest. It's a city interest, particularly given that this property's in the historic zone. So I'd ask you to flip it around. Don't think about terminating the contract zone. This is one of those situations that begs for us to improve the contract zone, to make it better, to increase the potential for Ms. Giuliano to market the property to a successor, to another party who wants to come along and love this building. She had it on the market for two or three years. It wouldn't sell, because these old places are hard. So I actually think you need to not react with the idea that all contract zones are bad, and to reflect on whether maybe this one just needs to be improved. So that's one city interest that was protected by the contract zone, which is the preservation and reuse of these wonderful old homes. The second city interest that was preserved was, and many of you may be experiencing what we haven't experienced in the COVID year, but if you've ever tried to drive down Cleveland Street when there's church going on at Trinity Episcopal or at the other church at the end of Cleveland, whose, the name escapes me, but there's two churches on Cleveland, it can be very difficult to get down Cleveland when cars are parked along it. So the contract zone actually provides for, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but the contract zone actually specifically requires that parking be available, be made available for the Trinity congregants on Sundays. The purpose of that was not only to benefit Trinity Episcopal, but to alleviate some of those parking pressures that exist on Cleveland Street. So, great, let's get rid of the contract zone, and we go back to, again, a mess on Cleveland Street. The contract zone serves that second city interest, which is reducing traffic burdens on Sundays. So I know it's counterintuitive. I know it's not the popular thing to say these days, whoever champions contract zones. But in this case, this is one of those ones that really worked for us. It's sort of like that old shoe building on Park Street, the old Lunder Shoe. It was another one of those weird funky old buildings, where actually the contract zone made a lot of sense. So you'll probably hear more testimony. I'm going to end, but I'd ask that you stop and have the staff reflect more on this, and give you some more background about it. Because this is one of the cases where the contract zone actually did advance your interests, the city interests, and rapidly getting rid of it, because it just seems easy, actually will undo some of the good that's been done. What we need to do is find a new owner who wants to love it as much as June did, and improve it even more, so that we keep this historic building vibrant and used. I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's good to see you all in person. My name is Betty Brunswick. I live at 11 Old Orchard Road in Saco. I'm here to support June Giuliano with her effort to use and manage her property at 401 Main Street in Saco. I have known June since I met my second husband in 2006. I believe it was at that time that she opened her salon in Saco. At that time, I lived in Scarborough with my children and discovered that June and her family lived there as well. Her hair salon, called Acapella, has been located on Route One in Scarborough for many, many years. My business at that time was also located in Scarborough. We shared a similar pride in having our businesses involved in community activities and fundraising for nonprofits. Since moving my home and my current business to Saco in 2010, I have volunteered and supported Saco in many ways. I support the industrial and commercial business base in Saco. Doing so brings a healthy balance to our property tax base. I believe you know the results of the past 10 years. Our thriving Main Street and TIF districts reinforce Saco's business-friendly environment. Our hard-working city departments and mindful council decisions help this effort. What I find very unfriendly, though, and unimaginable, is how the city attorney, Tim Murphy, has positioned himself within this contract zone debacle of 401 Main Street. I'm not sure why the council was not given the parking easement document in your last packet. I do have a copy right here. In it, you would see that Tim Murphy presided over both easement documents, as witnessed by his signature on both. Did he disclose his relationship with the church at that time? This relationship is definitely a conflict of interest. Why have a parking agreement, such as is noted in Section 2E of the contract zone, be filed with the York County offices? His action makes a court case sure to happen in the event of the contract zone being dissolved. June had no agreement with her neighbor, the church, for parking purposes without needing a lien or deed, this easement against her. I am very suspicious of the dragging out of this contract zone decision. As far as I can discern, the ordinances are clear for the Planning Department Director to decide without involvement from the council or Planning Board. What is not clear is what comes first. Should the court remove the easement, and then the contract zone be dissolved? Or is the contract zone dissolved first so that removing the easement in court can be fulfilled? Either way, she's got to go to court. I would like to further add that the action of amending a contract zone is only used to make change to the business function within the contract zone. The for-sale sign and relocation of the business is not amendment-worthy, so no notice needed to be given to the abutters. Bob Hamblin knew as much. I believe your precious time has been wasted because of petty differences brought on by Tim Murphy's involvement. I'll be amazed if the city isn't sued over this blatant attempt to cause the owner of 401 Main Street the lost opportunity of a property sale and her racked-up attorney fees. This has definitely been a bad example of Saco being business-friendly. Please dissolve this contract zone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Kaney, I live at 3 Blackberry Lane, and back in 2006, I represented June Giuliano as her attorney when she got her contract zone approved. I want to make it very clear tonight that I am not her attorney, you can tell because I don't have a tie on. When I was in private practice, I spent a lot of my career doing zoning work, and in fact, at one point, I think I had gotten most of the contract zone agreements in the city approved for my clients. This was one of them. I never imagined it would be harder to get out of a contract zone agreement than it would be to get into it. As you know, our zoning ordinance is designed to promote conformity as much as possible. Contract zone agreements are designed to kind of break that conformity a bit when it makes sense to do so. In this case, it made sense to do so. However, once the business was moved, the purpose of the contract zone went away, and Ms. Giuliano has been trying to work with the city, and I've been watching this with interest for the last two years, and found it remarkable that she has been told that she just needed a letter from the planner. Nope, she had to go to the Planning Board. Nope, she needed to go to the Planning Board and then to the council. Nope, she just needed to go to the council. She has been given bad information from the city staff all along the way, but we're finally at a point where you can take the action that needs to be taken. And I think it's important to separate, first of all, to recognize who are the parties to the contract? June and the city, that's it, just the two of you. The church is not a party to the contract. The church is a partial beneficiary to the contract, and I'll tell you why, because Arthur Skip Hewitt was a very good negotiator. He had leverage. He realized that if the church opposed this contract, it was going to be tougher to get it through, and as a result, he was able to negotiate an easement for parking on Sundays and certain holidays. That was it. Why did it make sense? Because it was going to be a business with a parking lot, and that business was not going to be open on holidays and Sunday. So not a bad trade. The business is gone now, that should be returned to a lawn, and the easement deed that has been referred to specifically says right in it, if that property reverts to a residence, the easement is done unless it goes back to being a business again. That easement's been gone for two years, because it's been a residence for two years. They've been back to Cleveland Street. As far as I know, the church is still surviving and doing well. So I don't think the lack of this parking, someone asked at the Zoom meeting, is this going to be a hardship to the church? It hasn't been a hardship for two years. It wasn't a hardship for the hundred or so years that it existed before 2006, so there's no reason that this shouldn't be terminated now. Again, separate the easement from the contract. The easement says that if it's a residence, the easement's gone, okay? The contract said you got to give an easement under the terms that were given, and that, and the contract's gone, she's asking to put it back to the way it was before, and the suggestion that, gee, it's hard to sell these old houses on Main Street. She had three offers on this house, all of them fell through because of this contract zone dispute. That's the only reason. There are people who want these old houses in this market, they want them, and they'll love them, the way they're meant to be loved, and so the suggestion that somehow the city is going to be dis-served by terminating this contract zone is ridiculous. I thought it was interesting that Attorney Murphy, who I've known and respected for a long time, got up here, I thought he was going to talk on behalf of the church, reality was, he talked on behalf of the city, and that's the blurring of that line that was mentioned earlier, and that's unfortunate. But I hope that you folks will do the right thing and finally terminate this contract so that she can move on with her life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
acting inappropriately here. Let me assure the council that I'm not. In 2004, 2005, I will be happy to send you the memo that I sent to the city saying I will be representing Trinity Episcopal as regards to this matter, and you, the city, need to find independent legal counsel. I repeated that same process in 2018 or 19, when the dispute arose between June Giuliano and Trinity Episcopal Church. I again deferred as counsel for the city and advised the city administrator that I would be acting as counsel for Trinity Episcopal, so that the roles and lines were not blurred. As you know me for quite some time, you know I well understand what my responsibilities are. I was pointing out earlier that the contract has specific city benefits, because that's what I thought you were interested in hearing. I can talk to you about Trinity's legal dispute, but that will be resolved in court, and we have a different view than Attorney Kaney has as to how the outcome of that will go. But nonetheless, I have acted ethically through this matter, I can assure you of that, and I find it sad that people immediately revert to these sorts of personal attacks, particularly where they completely lack any knowledge as to the matter. So, thank you again, I'm sorry to take up your extra time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter in the public hearing? Counsel Johnston?
Move the closed public hearing and schedule a final reading on July 26, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counsel Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Berman, close of public hearings, set final reading. Any discussion? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was brought up that a contract zone is for the entity. I just wanted to make sure and clarifying, and if we can use outside counsel, not our current city attorney on this question, but is a contract zone in perpetuity? For example, if Convenience MD stops becoming a healthcare facility, would it revert back to a restaurant? Or is it in perpetuity where that usage applies for, again, I say the word perpetuity? So does the closure of a business seize the intended purpose of that contract zone? And if possible, a legal decision outside of, a third-party legal decision would be appreciated.
City Administrator Kane Rath, can we seek an MMA opinion perhaps on that? Although I think contract zone amendments normally have a closure clause in them. If the business leaves, then they're no longer granted the contract zone, but you'd have to look at each individual contract zone agreement to look for that clause, but we'll get an opinion and have it for the next meeting. Counsel, Counsel Johnston?
Thank you. There was several comments tonight about having all the documentation, and it's kind of concerning to me, and it has been for some time, that I feel that our packets are sorely missing what we, as a body, need to actually make decisions. So I would ask that the city administrator ensure that whatever documentation, I don't care if the packet's a thousand pages, the Planning Board deals with that. So, again, whatever has occurred, you know, that's pertinent to this contract zone, I would request is in that packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Hatch?
For the record, I would support Counsel Johnston's comments. I'm a little disturbed myself on occasion when we have very important pieces of information missing from our packets. I had the occasion a few weeks ago to seek out a document that I thought was very important, it's sitting right in front of me right now, and it brought a lot of clarity to this particular situation, at least for me. So I am finding that a little bit disconcerting, and I would echo Counsel Johnston's sentiments.
Thank you. Anything further? City Administrator Kane Rath?
Now, just to respond, I don't know if City Planner Hamblin would like to respond, but we have heard these accusations, to my knowledge, there is nothing missing from the packets, but I don't know if Bob, you want to respond now, or we could respond later perhaps, but this has come up several times in the past few weeks, that there has been, by some, an intentional, you know, leaving out of certain documents out of packets, and I certainly am not aware of anything, but maybe you could respond also, because planning would be submitting whatever documents are needed for the packet.
Sure, thank you, City Administrator. Mr. Mayor, I am sure that from time to time, professional judgment is applied in documentation that is provided to the council on any given issue. Now, the Counsel Johnston has suggested that 1,000 pages is a limit that we can approach. We can lay on plenty more documentation. There's probably two-thirds more paper, pages of paper, that are involved with this particular issue that the council hasn't seen. Again, we try to keep this concise and to bring forward what in our professional judgment has the greatest bearing on allowing the council to reach a decision, but if more documentation is what the council desires, we can easily provide anything and everything.
Thank you, City Planner Hamblin. Any questions for the city planner? Counsel Berman?
Perhaps a suggestion more than a question. I've noticed our packets have started utilizing links to prior packets or other sources of documentation. Links to documents that are relevant but perhaps not critical could be provided to keep the packets a manageable, you know, thickness while also providing access to all the information that we may be seeking. We don't know to ask for it unless it's there.
Sure. Yep, links work.
Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
At this time, call for a roll call vote on the motion to close the public hearing and set final reading. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counsel Purdy?
Yes.
Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at 7:30 4 p.m. Brings us to Item E, a public hearing blanket waiver of covenants for all business parks to add emergency use as a permitted use for Saco schools, page 109 of the packet, and that is Counsel Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saco School Department is looking at temporary locations for schools while they await funding for a permanent larger school. Some of the lots that the school department was interested in pursuing are located within the city's business and industrial parks. The covenants for Spring Hill and Millbrook Business Parks do not currently allow schools as permitted use. Denise Clavett, Director of Planning and Economic Development, met with a group looking at potential sites, and after discussion, recommended that the school department approach the Economic Development Commission and the City Council to pursue a blanket waiver of all businesses and industrial parks to add emergency use for schools as a permitted use. Kevin Roach, who represented the schools at the Economic Development Commission, meeting held on April 12, 2021, emphasized this amendment is needed to allow the schools to consider properties in the business parks in emergencies. On April 12, 2021, the Economic Development Commission unanimously voted to recommend to council a blanket waiver of covenants for all business parks to add emergency use for the school department and Thornton Academy as a permitted use, subject to legal review and amendment language developed by the city attorney. On May 24, 2021, city staff addressed city council questions on the blanket waiver, received guidance from the council emperor. Pursuing the blanket waiver, city staff consulted with legal counsel to develop amendment language and process for the amendment. Of note, the school department may not need to locate in the business parks, but a waiver would be a good option to have should the need arise. At the City Council first reading on June 20, the City Council requested that the amended covenants be revised to define emergency use and add term length. The revised covenants are attached in the document. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counsel Purdy, open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second, there.
Second by Counsel Hatch to open the public hearing. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counsel Purdy?
Yes.
Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, to open the public hearing at 7:37 p.m. Those wishing to speak on the blanket waiver of covenants for all business parks to add emergency use as permitted use for Saco schools, please come forward and be heard.
Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road, I broke my earlier promise, and I'm back here. Apologies, but some issues came up, and some specifics here to the emergency use, different from selling the property. It originally came out because of COVID and our lack of space in Saco schools, but also it tied into an issue about the pre-K and totter-in that was out there as well. Like somehow magically, that gets put through with a lot of fighting, and yet, we're struggling to find space for our kids, and, you know, we don't have the same opportunities. I'm not a huge supporter of the, with the new administration in there now and more space, that I don't think we're going to need the space. So when you vote on this, emergency is that, it is emergency. And so what's come up here before about contract zones and staff and conflicts, whatever, I'm not saying that there's necessarily unethical behavior or anything untoward, but what I am saying is, when you guys vote on something, it is staff's duty to monitor it and have documents and keep an eye on it and follow up, contract zones especially. I mean, I think when I was on council, I had voted on everything that's been talked about, and my assumption from your seat is that those things are tracked, and those things are monitored, and those things, and also, there's bias involved. I've seen it, there is bias, bias for or against, and that, in your leadership, that has to stop. It has to stop, and how it stops is that when you vote on something very specific, like emergency use, you need to say it's emergency use, and when the use comes up, I would say it comes before council in a workshop or something that says, okay, this is the emergency. And you can hear it, maybe there's another vote from that, but I'm just, you know, we saw what happened last year, we've seen what's talked- We've seen what's talked about with other contract zones, is you've got to put it to staff clearly in your votes that this is our intention, and ask for that follow-up. Put it in your calendar saying, hey, a year later, where are we at? That type of thing. So again, we're all one city. A lot of the staff live here. I don't, I, you know, we can always agree to disagree when we're not, they're not going to be perfect, they're not going to have every I dotted T crossed, but seriously, we just got to be on the same team. And mean what you say, say what you do, and move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on blanket waiver of covenants for business parks to add emergency use? Seeing no hands and nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Purdy.
I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the final reading for July 26, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? No hands raised, nobody seeking recognition. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:41 p.m. That brings us to Item F, which was tabled from 6/28/2021. It was tabled at first reading, and that is Chapter 81, Conveyance of City-Owned Property at 32 Market Street, page 183 in the packet. Counselor Hatch. In order to discuss this, we would need to take this off the table for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to untable.
Motion's been made to untable by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on untabling? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion untable passes 7-0. Item is now on the table for discussion. Counselor Hatch, would you read the item commentary into the record, just to remind folks at home and folks in the audience?
A city-owned property at 32 Market Street is proposed for a possible sale to Southern Maine Affordable Housing. The one-and-a-half-acre parcel was subject to an effort by the city council in 2013 to promote affordable senior housing. That council approved the motion to enter into a developer-friendly agreement at minimal cost for the land, contingent on a 10% of the resale of units being directed into a housing fund that would benefit future city efforts to encourage affordable housing. With agreement in hand, the SMAH developed a plan for a 10-unit condominium project intended for downsizing seniors, those who are selling larger homes and looking for a smaller affordable housing alternative. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its April 6 meeting. The board voted 6-0 to forward a positive recommendation for the sale of the parcel, while recognizing that the parcel abuts the Boston and Main Rail Line and may be the future route of the Eastern Trail, for which an easement should be considered. I move to approve the first reading and to schedule a public hearing for July 26, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. It's now open for discussion? Any discussion on this item? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the issue that led to the tabling of this issue last meeting was one of a bond that was used to purchase the property for recreation. And the status of that bond, if we were to sell the property for this housing, I am very much in the favor of the goals of creating more affordable senior housing. I think that's a worthwhile project. I'm concerned about the bond. I see an opinion from Attorney Murphy in our packet that the sale of this property for this use would indeed violate the bond. What I don't see, and what I asked about at the last meeting, is what are the consequences of violating that bond? And whether there are ways to reimburse, or pay back, or otherwise alleviate the consequences of selling this property in regards to that bond? That would be very important for me in making this decision. Because in addition to wanting to preserve our status regarding that recreational bond, we've also put the developer through quite a bit of time and effort towards achieving this project. It clearly serves the interests of the city and our seniors, and I'd like to know more about that before I make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. City Administrator Kane Rath, did we get some advice from bond counsel on this?
Yes. Attorney Murphy, if he's here, was going to speak to that this evening. I don't see Tim in the room, but perhaps he's coming back, but he was here to speak to that question.
Counselor Johnston, while we wait.
Thank you. Yeah, along those same lines. I mean, that's pretty much where I was going to go. I think that, you know, obviously, Mr. Murphy has provided an updated opinion in the packet. When I say updated, I mean 2021 versus 2011 opinion. I am a little bit concerned that there are statements, whether it's from Mr. Attorney Murphy himself, or even others, and again, not pointing fingers, it's just, there's some insinuation that a prior counsel didn't take advice, and I find that inaccurate, very inaccurate, actually. What I have been able to dig up, and again, this goes back to having everything in our packets, so that's the prior actions of councils, is that Mr. Murphy gave an opinion to Rick Mischu, the former city administrator, on October 19, 2011. That never made it into a packet for a counsel. And in fact, the statement in the packet that actually did go out October 11, 2011, the city attorney has told the city administrator that he is comfortable with the concept of apportionment for the park portion. That's not what his actual legal opinion states. So I don't, I mean, maybe it was just, you know, someone didn't wordsmith it correct, but I think that's where the issue started. I mean, I have my own personal history with this, because back in 2011, I asked this question, which is why I believe that it was then subsequently asked to Attorney Murphy. I was never provided with a response then. I was never provided with a response when I sat on council in 2016, and this came back. And I asked downstairs in a workshop when this came back, I said, well, what about the bond funds? Because that was concerning to me. I didn't get a response. It never came to fruition. I, you know, kind of just put it in the back of my brain housing group and didn't think about it until it came back again recently. So there's still this issue for me. And as I said several weeks ago, I think we're all in support of some kind of senior or 55-plus, you know, affordable housing, but there seems to be many issues, even outside of the bond use for this particular parcel. I mean, we've kind of moved it along, which, you know, as I said several weeks ago, I was concerned with, because, you know, we eat up our agendas with things that I don't, I mean, I can't predict everybody else's, you know, their outcome, but I look at it and say, well, we've got a packed agenda tonight. We've had several packed agendas, and this one, as of today, I don't see how you can move it forward, particularly with the legal, you know, issues. And then, of course, we still haven't addressed the easement issues as far as, you know, where is the trail going to go? Are we going to seek a trail? We haven't had that dialogue as a body. There doesn't seem to be anything that's come to us from staff that could lay that out or spell it out for us. There actually appears to already be an easement, and again, I'm far from a professional in that area, but it looks, when I've done my research on it, that there is already an existing easement through the property, and I don't know how that plays into, you know, the issues at hand, but I just, I really feel like this isn't ready for primetime. So, you know, I kind of reluctantly actually untabled it, but I really don't think we should have probably even moved it that far forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Is there a motion, or there's a motion on the table by Counselor Hatch? Second by, excuse me, Counselor Berman to move forward with this? This is only the first reading of this item. So at this time, unless there's a motion to table, move forward with a roll call vote. Counsel? City Planner Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not only are we waiting for the city attorney to go through his own files and memories on how events turned out 10 years ago, I've seen a couple of emails that he has sent out to bond counsel in Southern Maine. Strictly speaking, Tim is not sure just what particular attorney may have acted as bond counsel on this issue for the city. He has reached out to a couple of plausible parties who have acted as bond counsel in other matters for the city. But at this point, Tim has not gotten to the bottom of that. We don't know what bond attorney we are seeking who acted on the city's behalf for the $1.5 million open space bond. So until that information is determined, it might make most sense for the council to table this, so that we can verify, determine information, et cetera, and put together a complete story for the council.
City Planner Hamlin, how much time would you need?
Impossible to say. We could find this out tomorrow, and it might take another three weeks, being the time of year it is. If, I dare say, if the council wants to be very sure of this information being pulled together, it might consider pushing this back a couple of weeks into perhaps one of your August meetings. July 26 will be here before we know it.
Mr. Mayor, I think I can help. I said several weeks ago that I believe it was Attorney Stockmeyer.
And I...
He used to do, I mean, I don't know if he still does, but he used to do these, and I believe I have documentation that states that it was him.
And that was carefully noted. I believe Tim has reached out to Attorney Stockmeyer among another one or two. We're still searching, but we appreciate that direction, and we are checking it out.
Thank you, City Planner Hamlin. Any further questions for City Planner Hamlin? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
City Counselor, Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. I make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Counselor Johnston, would you be willing to make your motion to table until the 9th of August, when it's perhaps our first meeting date? Therefore, we won't have to go through the exercise of untabling this at the July 26 meeting.
Yeah, that works for me.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy, you with a second? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. So there's been a motion to table this item to our August 9 meeting. By Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call vote? Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to table to the 9th. That brings us to Item G, tabled on 6/28/2021, a second and final reading, budget amendment number one, COLA adjustment, and that is on page 199 in your packet, and that is Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to untable the item from 6/28/21.
Motion's been made to untable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman to untable the item. Any discussion on untabling? Counselor Archer.
We still haven't seen the contract yet. So that was the initial reasoning for the tabling, so to untable it, I'll put the motion back to table it, because we haven't seen the actual, we haven't discussed it, I guess is the best way to say it. So that's why I'll be voting no to untable.
I think the idea here is so that it doesn't die, that you untable it and table it like we did with the other item, until the 9th, to give us the opportunity to go through the union contracts later this evening in executive session. Any further discussion? Roll call vote to untable the item, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to untable. Counselor McPhail, will you read into the record, just so everyone at home and everyone in the audience is familiar with what we're talking about?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the fiscal year 2022 budget process, a portion of the COLA was included as part of the approved budget in the initial pay lines. Additional funds were appropriated into payroll contingency to be reserved to bring the total COLA to 3% following union negotiations. It is common practice to mirror the COLA received by union and non-union employees. This amendment simply redistributes the increase to the individual pay lines from the contingency. It is important to adjust the COLA to a 3% amount to create pay equity between non-union and union employees, address compensation concerns, and ensure retention of our employees. Be it ordered that the city council approves the second and final reading of the budget amendment number one, fiscal year 2022, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Archer.
Yes, I want to bring this up now, I think would be the best, is that I want to recognize over the last couple of years, for those who haven't served on council, during union negotiations, I won't go into specifics because of executive sessions, is that I can talk about what personally we have shifted, or I have shifted, some of that responsibility of the tax base away from possible raises because of the increased school budgets, in which I had to weigh school budget versus city budget. Recognizing that we're having increased federal COVID funds this year, increased state revenue sharing and things like that, I'd like to make an amendment that this goes to, the 3% gets risen to 4% for this year only, to recognize and to possibly catch up some of the, some of the differences, some of the needs and resources that we had to shift due to increasing school budget, in which this year was very reasonable. So I think this is the year that we should bump it up one extra percent. So I make a motion to amend this motion to 4% instead of 3%.
Motion's been, excuse me, motion's been made by Counselor Archer to amend the COLA adjustment from 3% to 4%. Is there a second? Motion dies lack of a second. Back to the main motion on the table. Any further discussion? Is there a motion before us to table?
I'll move to table.
Second.
Would you be okay with tabling that till the 9th as well?
Absolutely.
Counselor Johnston, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion to table by Counselor Hatch, second by Counselor Johnston. Roll call vote on the motion to table, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to Item H of the agenda, a final reading, Riverwinds Farm Contract Zone, Contract Zone Amendment, excuse me, page 203 of the packet, and that is Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Riverwinds Farm Contract Zone was approved by the city council in July 2015, which allowed the establishment of an educational horseback riding program, a use not otherwise allowed in the C1 Zone by the Austin proprietor of Riverwinds Farm and Estate, then sought approval for amendments to the contract zone, which was granted by the council in September 2017, allowing the establishment of a venue for hosting private events such as weddings, graduation parties, and similar events on the property, or known as a place of public assembly. Ms. Austin now proposes to amend the contract zone, seeking approval to hold self-sponsored events on the property, which would allow public events such as comedy shows, dinner, theater, music, and holiday shows, special community classes, and events in open houses. The planning board reviewed the proposed amendment at its March 16...
The planning board reviewed the proposed amendment at its March 16, 2021, meeting and voted 3-0 to forward a negative recommendation to the council. I move to approve the final reading and adopt a proposed amendment to the contract zone by in-between River Winds Farm LLC, River Winds Trails LLC, and River Winds LLC in the city of Saco.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments. It's going to reflect my vote. It's a very difficult issue. I'm a very pro-business person, and I've been really struggling with the dynamics of this whole issue. I think what it, what it shows me is the inherent weaknesses in our contract zone process, lack of clarity in the written document. We've got some disagreement as to what similar events really means. I get it. It's not clear. And I also think that maybe this is a good example of an enforcement effort to try to get our contract zone recipients to really hold firm to the letter of the contract. In my professional world, with business, small business, commercial lending, legal contracts between businesses and banks who loan them money are very respected documents. They memorialize good faith verbal agreements. They need to be clear. And when there are allegations of breaching of a contract, it really becomes a very serious matter, and it should be dealt with very seriously. So I'm really trying to listen to both sides of the story, and although, you know, I'm in this world of working with small businesses, I own my own, I'm not sure, you know, we tend to see the pandemic as perhaps an excuse to push the envelope, but I do believe that it really forces us as business owners to remain loyal to the agreements that we've signed on to. Hundreds of thousands of businesses, including my own, were adversely impacted by this pandemic. So to reach out and find other income-producing sources that may not be in harmony with the agreement is difficult for me to accept. And I think we have to remind ourselves that when you receive a contract zone, it's a unique land use privilege. The terms under which it's received should be respected. I'm a recipient, my wife and I are recipient of a contract zone from the city of Saco in 1996, and I fully understand the magnitude of what I just articulated for you. It also appears to me that the vast majority of those who have spoken in favor of the proposed contract zone amendment have been vendors, customers, and employees of the applicant. And, you know, it's hardly an unbiased group. I would ask each one of them to think about what happens after they either service the facility, attend an event, go to work there, and go home. And they likely drive back to their residences, and their residences are benefiting from zoning ordinances designed to protect their chosen way of life. Unfortunately, the property owners living in the C1 zone cannot fully enjoy that same protection. So expanding the contract zone to include additional uses, I think, only exacerbates an already seemingly unmanaged and out-of-control situation. So there are many other zones in the city that allow for this type of expanded commercial use, and suggesting that not approving this contract zone amendment will stifle activity, business activity in Saco, I don't feel is a logical argument in my mind. So I wanted to make my views public because they will be reflected in my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Archer?
Doesn't matter. I saw him go first, that's why I waited.
Can I go ahead?
Did you want to defer to Counselor Johnston? Is that what you're telling me?
I saw his hand first, so...
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. First, I'd say I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Hatch, but I think there's, again, some things that are kind of missing from the total picture here, and I certainly understand it's emotionally charged, and we've got several people that are very supportive of it and others that are on the other side, so I'm going to try to stay away from the emotions of things. But really, if we go back and we look at the history, going back to 2013 or 2012 that I recall, and again, that's prior to my time on council, but I was following along, we had a structure, a barn, that was built as a private barn that didn't meet the height requirements. Council at the time, if I recall correctly, either gave them a variance or amended the zoning ordinance, I don't particularly remember. But it was stipulated at the time that it would remain a private use. Then, you know, I believe it was 2015, I'm sitting on council, and it comes back for a commercial use, which at that time was a riding stable. I recall being kind of, you know, apprehensive about it, but ultimately, I personally supported it, thinking it would, you know, it played well into, obviously, the Rural Conservation District, as it's called now. You know, soon after that, there was a request for like a shooting range or something, as I recall. I didn't think that really fit well, so ultimately, I think council turned that down. Then we had this wedding venue, which in my mind was always a wedding venue, and I found it very convoluted at the time that it became a place of public assembly, because as the applicant has said, it seems kind of ambiguous, and that was my concern at the time. That's 2017. I believe I'm the only counselor still up here that was involved in that vote, and that was honestly some twisting from a former counselor, Mr. Roach, that ultimately convinced me to cautiously vote in favor of this, thinking that there was enough parameters in place that we could control it. It didn't take long to see, and again, this is not saying that any, the venue themselves or the vendors are doing anything, you know, nefarious, it just clearly didn't fit in with the zone. You know, and so here we are, 2021. I sat through two years of a zoning ordinance revision. I mean, there's no secret about it. I've been a big advocate for the Conservation District. That whole process, I didn't hear any comments from community members, planning board members, other committee members saying that we should create commercial use such as this. I mean, again, it's a place that I myself might actually go and attend, but it's clearly out of alignment with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, the same zoning ordinance that this council just recently approved. So if we had thoughts at that time that this is the type of use we want to allow in the RC zone, we probably should have made amendments then. I think taking this process and using contract zone to really further expand a use that does not fit the zone is, you know, as others said tonight, it's beyond concerning to me because it is precedent-setting. And I've had other counselors in the past say, every action we do is precedent-setting. Well, no, this truly is, because what we've done in the past, 2018, yeah, 2018, we had a similar proposal come before a council I sat on, and we rejected it. And I can't speak for everybody that was on that council, but I know largely myself looked at it and said, well, we already have one, and it's clearly not working. I understand it's working for you all, but it really doesn't work for that zone, what the intent of that zoning is. You know, as others have said, well, change the zoning, and I'm not advocating for that, but that's the correct process. It's not to come and ask for another amendment, and we're now going to call it self-sponsored events, which, again, I find a bit convoluted. If you look into what the law actually allows for with catering, you're going to allow up to 100 events. I'm not saying they're going to use all 100, but our actions, say we approve this, that's what they're going to be allowed. How do you control that? Where are the parameters in this contract zone to control the issues that are going to come from that? I think that, you know, to just allow that, we have, again, what I looked at allows operation 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM. So I understand that they're saying that we're going to operate till 10:00 PM, and again, I'm not putting it on the applicant. It's really for us to determine if this council's going to approve this, you know, stricter parameters, but as I sit here again today and tonight, and we're supposed to make decision, we've had none of these conversations, and I don't see how you move this forward without continually creeping into a Rural Conservation District that many have really worked to, you know, uphold, and maybe, you know, other counselors feel differently, but I don't think time's right now to start allowing these uses or, you know, similar uses, really. I think that the people that have chosen to live in that district, like everybody that lives in a zoning district, hopefully you do your due diligence, you understand what's allowed, they're expecting that, particularly one we just approved, to remain a certain way, at least until you go through that process of changing it. So again, I, again, nothing against the vendors or the location, the venue, I'm sure it's remarkable, but it really doesn't fit with the spirit of the comprehensive plan or the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So within the, since our last public hearing, I've spent a little bit of time researching this a little bit deeper, and I have new information which has added more confusion to how I was going to make a decision, so I'm going to present that to you. When you look at the current contract zone, the one that's in place, the events that were happening in August or September or October of 2020 were allowed. There is a document here, an email from David Toomey to Gina, Gina is the bar manager, is that events coordinator, something to that effect, she spoke here earlier today, that allowed events similar to what's identified here as self-sponsored events, as long as it's a fundraiser. All she has to do is make it a fundraiser, and she's allowed to hold it. Hi, can I read from the document? It's one paragraph. "Hi Gina, since you have submitted more information," this was written on 9/24/20, "since you have submitted more information during our meeting today that shows the events are similar to the event that Richard Lambert allowed on September 18, 2020, I will also allow you to host these events." That's a precedent. This is why I looked at the current contract zone. It's gray, you can run a truck through it. Similar events, that is also in the contract zone, which is not clear. I want to continue a little bit later. I hope that you move Beth, I hope that, hold on, I hope you will have Beth move ahead and request a contract zone amendment as discussed at our meeting, so that there will be less questions of what is and isn't allowed in the future. So this amendment that comes on the floor, if it was to be canceled, these events can still happen under the auspices of a fundraiser. What that does is now any time that they want to use these self-sponsored events under the fundraising term, is we have to have staff go out there, verify, double-check, and it's adding to more staff time. So I have that on one hand, and I also have several residents who reached out to me regarding the contract zone, and they don't like it, but I have to look at it from the legal side of the risk. So I definitely understand where my residents are coming from. If I could have made this vote in 2017, I don't know how I would have voted, but we have a contract zone, which, again, I asked about the question of perpetuity, but I believe it still applies because it's the same business. This amendment is just trying to clarify a gray document. It doesn't change the fact that they can't hold a holiday show. Make, all she has to do is make it a fundraiser. I believe her first one, September, was for a horse organization or something to that nature, and that was allowed by the city. This creates problems. It's so gray that we really don't know what to do. So what I started thinking, and I didn't want to do this arbitrarily, and I also didn't inform you because I felt this was needed for the floor, the public, so I haven't contacted my fellow counselors to give this information. I will forward the email to you for your own records. Again, it wasn't in the packet, so you weren't aware of it. This is the time that, again, I'm not making a motion yet, but I'm going to make a motion to table as well, and I'm fine with the August 8 date, or whatever was addressed earlier, to tighten up this contract. Again, the applicant will be able to do as she stated in this amendment, just in a different form. It's going to require follow-up, significant follow-up from the city, and they're going to have to use the same justification that was done in September of 2020. What I would like to do is have a residence of Saco, again, my ward, but anybody who wants to speak, I'd like to hold a meeting in which I will propose amendments if this is tabled. What I want to look at is some of the things that some of the residents brought up, if this was to be amended, is how many people can attend, how many of these self-sponsored events can happen, so if you, and again, I didn't want it to be done arbitrarily, so I definitely want to have a meeting with both sides, the applicant and citizens who are concerned or want to chip in. Define what 80% of, and I'm just making these numbers up, this is arbitrary, I don't want to change it yet because it's arbitrary. 80% of the events must be weddings, 20% can be self-sponsored. How can we come up to a very non-gray, very concrete percentage of business use? Again, it can happen as is, so if we deny this, the applicant can hold as many self-sponsored events under a fundraising reason, reasoning, and she can have as many as she wants. This is how we can tighten up the contract, make it less gray, more concrete, while still allowing these self-sponsored events that, again, can still happen without this amendment. But we can, because this document is in perpetuity, we can clean it up now. So I do, as of right now, I make a motion to table to allow for the implementation of additional amendments to help clean up this document.
Counselor Archer has made a motion to table to the August 9th meeting?
I'll second that.
Has now been seconded by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote on the motion to table. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to table passes 5-2. That brings us to item I of the agenda, final reading for a zone change request, 372 Main Street, page 237 in the packet. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh Waterhouse, DBA JW Group LLC owns the property at 372 Main Street, a former doctor's office, currently a five-unit apartment building. Mr. Waterhouse seeks a rezoning that would enable the number of units within the multifamily dwelling to increase from six to 10. The building is in the medium-density residential zone with the new zoning map and ordinance. Multifamily dwellings of three to eight units are possible at a density of 5,000 square feet per unit. Six units would be possible for the 30,492-square-foot parcel. If the parcel is rezoned to high-density residential, multifamily dwellings of three to eight-unit buildings, and multifamily dwellings of greater than eight-unit buildings will each be a conditional use. The minimum lot area per dwelling unit would be 3,000 square feet, so up to 10 units would be possible. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its March 30 meeting. After discussion and a public hearing, the board voted 6-0 to forward a negative recommendation to the council. I move to approve the second and final reading and the rezoning of the parcel at 372 Main Street from medium-density residential to high-density residential as proposed.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. And discussion? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this one. I'm going to support this one, even recognizing that the Planning Board went against it, 6-0 to be, in fact. After looking at this property and with its proximity to downtown, this is kind of another example of infill, in which we are trying to do here within the city. I did look in the Planning Board, I mean, traffic was brought up as a concern, but once I've recognized that, we're talking, that we're talking, at present can be up to six units, and we're going up to 10, we're talking about four more residential apartments using the average of two cars per unit. I mean, we're talking about additional eight cars, and I do not see that as significant or dangerous at this time, just because you're going from 12 to 20. I'm not seeing that increased traffic. I would suggest that right-hand turn. All those other things that were discussed, yes. But in this case, again, I see this as an infill. We're trying to utilize infill opportunities. Again, it's going to, that increased units in our inventory here within the city helps to reduce costs of those apartments, to make it a little bit more affordable. So in this case, I was initially against it, but now I've, after deeper research, I'll be moving forward with it for those reasons stated.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston, did you have, and then we'll go to Counselor Berman.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm still trying to figure out where this mic is supposed to be. Can you hear me from here without it sounding like I'm yelling? Okay. So again, I think over the last, it feels like several months now, you know, I've tried to explain at least, you know, my own perspectives, you know, where I was coming from during the rezoning process. And I certainly don't speak for others of that committee or the Planning Board, you know, in regards to how they ultimately voted, which was to keep this in the MDR. This, from my own perspective, was really out of the three properties we were looking at. This really was the most appropriate that could fit into the HTR. After, again, several conversations on that, I think, from where I was, it's still really today, I have an issue with creating what can essentially only be called an island of zoning, where, you know, this property being switched basically creates two lots of the MDR, and this would be in the HDR. So again, going back to that zoning revision, it was kind of like, hey, we want to create the most harmonious zoning lines or districts. So again, it was either change all three, change one, and that ultimately, from my perspective, wasn't, you know, harmonious. But again, my bigger concern during those conversations, and really still today, are the other two lots. It's not so much this one. It was the Gregory House on the corner and the other one in between, as those lots' sizes are really too small to handle, you know, additional units. So I kind of always felt, you know, I could go either way with this. But, you know, I've been watching, obviously it's down the street from my house, I've been watching Mr. Waterhouse, you know, do the work, and I'm hopeful that, you know, he's going to do a good job and restore that house. So, I mean, the only other thing I would add is I do hope that the Planning Board, as they take this up as a conditional use, they do consider eliminating that left-hand turn. Outside of that, I mean, I think that, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Waterhouse has had to go through a lot to get to this point, and I perhaps wish that he kind of had been brought in before the committee, prior to any of this really had started, but it didn't happen. So, I mean, ultimately, I can be supportive of this. Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've dealt with a lot of tricky zoning issues tonight, and in my mind, this is not one of them. Urban infill is something I think that we all desire, creating more affordable housing for families is something we all desire. Moreover, we shouldn't conflate the number of units with the number of bedrooms. Mr. Waterhouse has expressed his intent to create larger units if he's stuck to six, which would have two and three-bedroom units, increasing the number of cars per unit than if we allow him to create multiple smaller units. This, in his estimation, would reduce the number of cars and the amount of traffic, further fulfilling our goals. So in my mind, this is almost a no-brainer and worthy of support.
Counselor Hatch?
Yeah, I would also agree with the sentiments that have been expressed here by my fellow councilors. And I, for me, the biggest issue, as Counselor Johnson has just mentioned, is the egress, ingress and egress from the property. So I think that can be dealt with effectively at the Planning Board level, and make sure that the traffic component of that property is dealt with as effectively as possible.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the matter? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item J, a final reading, contract zone for 507 Main Street, on page 238 in the packet, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Applicant Saco Retail Management LLC requests consideration of a contract zone that would enable a 5,350-square-foot commercial building to replace what has been a Pizza Hut for several years. Highway business zone allows each of the proposed uses, an eating establishment, a drive-through window service, and retail, but the applicant seeks to ensure that a drive-through is allowed, excuse me, that parking between the street and the building is allowed, and that the drive-through lane is allowed to be less than five feet from a property line. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board at its May 4th meeting. After discussion of public hearing, the board voted 5-1 to forward a negative recommendation to the council. Staff recommends adaption of the amended contract zone agreement, which takes into account a rear access drive and future realignment of the project entrance. I move to approve the final reading and to adopt the proposed contract zone agreement between the City of Saco and applicant Saco Retail Management LLC titled 507 Main Street, CZA Proposed Final, per city attorney, on 6/22/2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the contract zone for 507 Main Street? Counselor Hatch?
Yeah, I would just like to express a couple concerns about how this is evolving. We've heard public comment dealing with issues related to traffic, which I think is directly related to the perception, the reality, I guess, that we're creating a single-use building into three uses. And I don't think that we've got a clear picture on how the traffic impacts particularly Smith Lane. I know there's been lots of discussion about the access road coming in. I know easements have been negotiated. So I'm, I understand that component, but I'm not really sure that I'm comfortable with allowing that existing building to have three units in it. If I go through the application here, the proposed final contract agreement, which begins on page 239 of your packet, if we get to section two, and I'm going through the, sort of the justifications of using a contract zone to accomplish the development on the site. The first one, A, is basically, I think, illustrates a, maybe a subtle oversight in our new ordinance, where we, for some reason, did not allow a fast-food restaurant within our new ordinance, when in the old ordinance it was there. You know, I think that can be remedied very simply by, you know, directing some change to the ordinance and vetting out that at the council level. I'm a little concerned about the item B, which is the parking between the building and Main Street. There's a reference in this contract that says, you know, prior to January 21st, we could do this, now we can't. I'm a little unsympathetic to timing, you know, if it were that important, you might have tried to accelerate the process. But also, I've been made aware that there are other businesses along Main Street and that general area that were actually required to eliminate parking between their building and Main Street. And I really, I really don't feel we should be using a contract zone to allow somebody to do something under the old ordinance when we've actually required other developers to eliminate that parking. I think this, and then the setback, which is C, it's only a setback problem because the existing building is so close to the property line. For those of you who have actually taken a look at the property, as you come into Smith Street or Smith Lane, and you look to the left, there's a fairly sizable grassy knoll there. If that building were lifted off its existing location and moved to comply with the lack of parking in the front, they could easily create a drive-through lane that is similar to the property across the street at Kentucky Fried Chicken, where the drive-through comes through clearly around the front of the building with no parking issues. So I think, I think there's plenty of, I don't see a hardship, I guess is what I'm driving at here, in, on this property. It's simply a developing cost issue, and I don't think a contract zone should be considered a tool to make it easier for a developer to come in and try to circumvent the existing rules with a contract. And to my knowledge, and maybe it's inappropriate at this level, but I have seen no traffic studies that, personally, and I don't know if they exist, that addresses the, not the back access point, but the actual traffic that is going to certainly end up on that property. You're taking one building that had one user, and you're putting three businesses in it. And I think just common sense would tell you that traffic issues are going to be far worse on this redeveloped site than they were when the Pizza Hut was there. So I wanted to publicly indicate those thoughts to you because that will be reflected in my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. City Planner Hamblin, would you join us?
Couple of questions, sir.
Yes.
How close is the drive-through at Dunkin' Donuts compared to the accessway or parking for Starbucks?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know. I don't know. But I will tell you this, that citywide, there is a five-foot setback requirement from the edge of parking or drive-through lanes. And that's exactly what this, I hope I'm not, exactly what this applicant is seeking to modify in item C, as Counselor Hatch pointed out, that they recognize the five-foot setback for their drive-through lane, they would just as soon reduce that to three, perhaps four feet. And I'm being totally serious, I have no idea what the drive-through is for Dunkin' Donuts. If, however, it conforms with zoning ordinance requirements, it is no less than five feet off the property line.
Thank you. And, correct me, there is parking today at the Pizza Hut building along the front, along Route 1, correct? So if there was a turnkey operation that went in tomorrow, they would have parking up front, even though some other places, like the dentist that went through a contract zone process, they were not allowed to have spaces up front, much like Convenient MD, when they went through their contract zone process, they were not allowed to have spaces up front.
Precisely. If you're going to knock it down and start from scratch, so to speak, today's zoning ordinance says no parking between the building and the street.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions for Bob?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Further discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think that Counselor Hatch raised some pretty good questions, and they were well-articulated. I think, though, when you look at the site, and we think about, you know, what was there and what could be there today, anything that goes there really is going to be impactful when it comes to traffic, and rather problematic. And that's why, again, when this first came up and it went to the Planning Board, I spoke with the Planning Board and made the applicant very much aware that I was seeking that back-access road. And so while, you know, I can certainly agree, maybe, and I certainly haven't been an advocate of contract zones, you know, as Attorney Murphy said earlier, I actually kind of view this as a good use of a contract zone, specific to the easement. Because I've sat here for almost eight years now, and I've watched business after business come and go, and we sit back and watch the traffic increase, and we've done nothing, going all the way back to 2005 and probably before, where we talked about back-access roads. This was the perfect opportunity, and again, I made it pretty clear that I wouldn't support it unless we had that easement. And thankfully, you know, and to the credit of the applicant and city staff, they very quickly went about diligently getting this in place. I was actually, you know, shocked I didn't have to repeat myself. So in respects to the contract zone, you know, when I looked at it and you look at the standards, you know, in itself, I don't look at it as very unique, and I think that's where the Planning Board was coming from. But it is unique in the sense that it's a main component of this back-access or easement. So with that in place, it is unique, at least from my perspective, because without it, we can't do a back-access. I mean, I guess we probably could go through that process of, you know, eminent domain or whatnot, but it would probably cost us more than it's worth. So, you know, as the mayor had mentioned and others had talked about that, no parking in the front. I mean, I've been a big supporter of that, though this particular property, I've always kind of viewed differently, with that, the front already has a pretty large strip of land, and then the parking sits down below. And so the intent with that new zoning ordinance and really long before that was not having cars a butt right up on the street, because it's not an inviting streetscape to a pedestrian. But I've never really found walking by the Pizza Hut location to feel, you know, maybe the way I have in other areas where you're right up on, you know, a parking lot. And then, of course, you know, with that side setback or the drive-through, you know, as also was alluded to, I mean, it's direct to butter as Dunkin' Donuts, and I haven't heard from anybody at Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks that has expressed any concern about it. So, you know, it's really a minor relief from the overall zoning ordinance. So again, with, you know, that easement in place, which is before us and it's drafted, I can be supportive of this. I mean, I honestly, you know, I would agree. I don't necessarily think that this is probably the best process, because a lot of these things we could have adjusted, but we could not get that easement. They didn't have to give it to us through the contract zone. That's the public benefit that all public, or all contract zones really should have, and many of ours don't. So, I mean, I really look at this as a good use of the contract zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to help Mr. Counselor Hatch on one of his questions in regard to the traffic flow, things like the traffic study will come later with the Planning Board. But if you just look at that property and the location of Smith Lane, going into the Pizza Hut, former Pizza Hut property will not be, is not any backup to traffic. The parking lot is large enough to hold the amount of vehicles. Right now, there are bigger concerns with the KFC building and Dunkin' Donuts. Their positioning, Dunkin' Donuts is, on any given good morning, is overflowed onto Main Street, as is the KFC coming out onto Smith Lane. That's blocking the traffic at this point in time. And anybody leaving the property, it is a right turn and a left turn at the light. So you're splitting the traffic, and you've got that, you know, good portion of footage at the front that will help to split and alleviate some of the traffic backup as you're entering onto Main Street, going either left or right. And just to reiterate everything that Counselor Johnston just said, exactly, I actually had, I worked at Pizza Hut when they first opened. I've seen it on its busy I've seen it on its busiest days of overflow people, and it, it is a unique building, and it is a unique spot. And over the last few years, I, this is what Saco wants. People have asked for this, and for us to go through this. And again, the developers have worked with us to this point, and I have no concerns that they will not continue to work with us to get the best possible, proper layout for the city.
Thank you. Does anyone have any objection to hearing from the applicant before us, or the developer?
I don't want to take up too much of your time. We, we were prepared to present at the public hearing, and we're waiting for an opportunity virtually to do that, and it didn't arise. I just wanted to say, the applicant is dedicated to Saco, to Counselor Hatch's question on timing. If you look at the summary on the back of the packet, there's actually a bullet-by-bullet summary which talks about the process that, that sort of gave rise to the situation with the contract zone that's here tonight. And All Rig has been dedicated to bringing Chipotle and others into this particular area for some time. It was only in getting into the application process, engaging our office, that All Rig discovered that the zoning was mid-change. So there was not, there was simply not enough time, and I think that the planner can, can attest, there was not enough time to rush it through, although we were prepared to try and do that. Otherwise, I, I don't think we have too much more to add. Counselors have made some very, very good points. I do want to clarify, though, what was requested was an easement. What the city's getting is a deed. You're not getting an easement. You're getting an outright grant of ownership of the property. It's a fee interest with warranty covenants that we're putting in the hands of your attorney, Tim Murphy, pending closing on the property for the city to build its street whenever it sees fit, without any sort of time requirement to do so. That change happened within four days after the meeting. And just so you know, the submissions to the planning board were made, and after the submissions were made, we found out about the request for the back access. And then we had the public hearing at the planning board where they, where they roundly sort of voted against, and then shifted gears. And to its credit, the developer turned very quickly towards, all right, if this is what the city wants, we can, we can make those changes to accommodate. So I just want to, want that point of clarification. And a point of order, was the motion for Saco Retail Development, or was it for All Rig USA Development?
Saco Retail Management LLC titled 507 Main Street, CZA.
I think there's just a typo in what was prepared by Bob, without hopefully throwing Bob into the bus.
Not at all.
Humbly, humbly suggest that the applicant should, or for, for now, the co-applicant should be All Rig USA Development LLC, not just the, the ultimate entity. I think the application shows that it's All Rig on the file.
Correct. So that represents a, an amendment to the draft motion.
And other than that, thank you very much for your time. It's been a pleasure, actually, working with, with staff on this, and everyone was collaborative in, in the whole process, from planning down to engineering.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor? Let me go back to Counselor Archer first. Counselor Archer, anything?
It's actually not related to what was brought up, but I was going to talk more about justification for voting. I will, this is why I love public debate. It can, it can really add more information to, for when you make a decision. I will admit, I was leaning more towards Counselor Hatch's reasoning, but hearing from our current planning board liaison and our Counselor John, Counselor McPhail, and then our Counselor Johnston, who I consider a planning guru myself, and definitely listened to his opinion. Originally, it was really about the traffic, and it was about the uniqueness, uniqueness. I didn't see adding three more fast foods necessarily as unique, considering we have all those other locations, and we have an empty building where Krispy Kreme used to be. And I was using my justification, some of it was related to, again, traffic being an issue, but it was really about that uniqueness factor. Counselor Johnston presented additional public benefit, which is unique. And then when, I didn't catch your name, attorney? Attorney, correct?
Yes, Jason Howard Bredy.
Attorney Jason here. When he said it was actually going to be deeded, that helps strengthen the public benefit argument. And actually, that is what is, mostly, it's my fellow colleagues, and then seconded by the attorney, and I just want to make sure the attorney's interpretation of deeded is correct. I'm not going to ask the attorney who's representing himself. I'm going to ask, what do we, is that how we, the city understands it? Is that it's being deeded? I'll leave it, yeah.
In, in the packet is the deed and the recorded memorandum of option, which gives the right, the, the city the right to take the deed and record it. So it's, it's in your packet as proposed, as written by your attorney.
Yes. Thank you. And sometimes we need legal interpretation by our lawyer to help us out, but I appreciate you pointing that out. As, again, I'm looking more for, is that what was presented, that this will be deeded? Is that the actual interpretation of the city? Because that is going to be...
That's the notice of option on page 253 of your, of your packet, where it talks about the quick claim deed in the form agreed upon by the city's attorney conveying approximately 50 feet by 316-foot strip of land shown on the above referenced site plan. That's under terms, subsection two.
And I do remember the documents that showed it. We saw some of the mapping of that, so I do remember that, but I just wanted to make sure. So again, I, in this case, public debate has actually changed my mind, which, thank you for your input.
Counselor Hatch.
Whoops, sorry. On the status of the, the parties who are interested in leasing? I think that arguably, and I would fall into this trap, I'm a big fan of Chipotle. You dangle Chipotle out to the public as a tenant, which I think affects the opinion of the project, but what is the status of the lease agreement? Do we have a lease agreement executed? Do we, I mean, what is, what if you, we let you do this and we don't get Chipotle? Is that, yes, my concern?
So I've been authorized to share that there is a signed lease, which is contingent upon us acquiring the real estate. Getting the contract zone is a condition of us closing on the purchase of the real estate. Thank you. You are an officer of the court, and I trust you.
Any further discussion?
One confirmation, this gets back to the wording of the motion. So just to advise the council, applicant Saco Retail Management LLC should be lined through, and that should be replaced with applicant All Rig USA Development LLC.
Is there a counselor willing to make that motion, amendment?
I move to amend the motion, such as City Planner Hamblin just read. Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Johnston, to amend the title as expressed by the city planner. Any discussion on the amendment? On the amendment, only roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion, the amendment passes seven zero, back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote as amended. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. That brings us to item 10 of the agenda, and that is new business, subsection A, charter amendments. City Administrator Kenrath, are you going to take us through the charter amendments proposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I did want to, if Michelle, City Clerk Michelle Hughes is possibly ready to come up and just talk about the ones that she had proposed that we see laid out first. So Michelle, I don't know if you want to come up and just say a few things about your charter, charter amendments?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. On the charter amendments, this was something that we had discussed back in January, and one of the, the items in the packet is dated January 29th, 2021. The first amendment that I recommended, the 2.06(c)(1), that one's actually not needed right now. That was brought forward back in January when there were some other suggested motions, but it doesn't appear that those are coming before the council, so this motion is not needed anymore. The section 2.06(c)(2), we do need to take out the warden special primary, because we don't have primaries anymore. And also, we've had some, some issues with the special elections, determining how a special election should be run and stuff. So I think that that's something that we need to address as well. I had brought forward that normally, when you have a regular election, you need to have absentee ballots 30 days before Election Day. You have your nomination papers in 60 days before the election, as well as have the nomination papers available like 40 days before that. So if you're interested in staying with the special elections, I think that there needs to be some warden in here that actually defines it. Back when the charter was done, I don't believe that there was absentee ballot in, so things could be done in a, you know, fairly quick manner. Nowadays, we have absentee ballot in, and that's normally 30 days before Election Day. So that nomination process would be shortened, the absentee ballots would be shortened, and we would be running a hand count election. And that kind of follows through on section 4.01(f). That talks about the, the 60-day special election as well. And section 803(g) also refers to the 60-day special elections. The other area that I'm interested in updating is 803(d), where it, it has the school board on the same level as the mayor, when I think it actually should be down with the ward counselor, warden, ward clerk section. And that's all that I have for right now.
Thank you. City Clerk Hughes, any questions for, for Michelle at this time? Counselor Archer?
Yes, less about what's being presented, but more about the process. Will this be, are we planning to have this for this November, which will, do we need, can you remind me what the numbers are? As I know, we have to base it on the last gubernatorial or presidential election. This is an election which is not, presidential elections tend to be the most attended. Would you say that's semi-accurate, accurate?
Yes.
And this is not a presidential election, so that may create a challenge or barrier? How many voters do we need to show up to have this valid, I guess, the results validated, I guess? You know more about this than I do.
Yeah, that doesn't come into play on regular November elections. That's only if you have a special June election, then you have to have a certain majority.
So November election for charter changes has no minimum required voters?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure on that one. Thanks.
Any further questions for City Clerk Hughes? Thank you very much. The next two charter amendments, one has been put forth to City Administrator Kenrath by Counselor Johnston, and then one by Counselor Gunn. Counselor Johnston, do you want to just highlight and take us through what you had sent to the city administrator for changes to section 6.06 in the municipal budget?
Well, I mean, obviously, my, my email's here verbatim, but essentially, you know, I was trying to go, I had presented this back in 2019, I believe, which really just takes us back to the way we approved the school budget prior to entry into an RSU, which was, you know, as, as I would describe as just proving the bottom line, where we're essentially saying this is what the tax levy will be, and then the school does what they want with it. I mean, that's the function of the school board, is ultimately to decide their budget. So the cost centers plays into the state law with the RSU, and when we came out of it in 13 or 14, it just never went away. It just continued on, and my experience with it over several budgets now has been, even when we adjust the cost center, because the state law allows for a 5% adjustment from the superintendent's side of things, ultimately, if we were fixated on a specific cut, it generally doesn't go there. So to me, it's just easier to, to say, hey, 27 million is going to be what comes from the tax levy, and figure it out. I mean, I'm hopeful that we're going to have, you know, more in-depth conversation, but my experience has been it's a, well, the council, or what have you. And, and I, I think it's just going forward, particularly with the change of administration and the school side of things. I think we all saw several months ago how, how much fluid, more fluid that was with, with Superintendent Ray, and, and obviously, that's, you know, there's no guarantee he'll be here forever, but I just think that, you know, going to, to this system is, is better. Thank you.
Any questions regarding changing it to go from line item reductions to overall levy reduction? Okay. Counselor Gunn, do you want to take us through your email and your proposed charter amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of my suggested amendments to the city administrator were based on the fact that after the last time the charter was amended to stagger the terms, and we had some sort of gray areas where we had to rely on, to my frustration, and I know the frustration of other councilors, not to the negative result, but the fact that we had to rely on legal opinion to sort of cut through sort of nebulous language that resulted from the charter changes. So my, my suggestions were pretty much based on codifying what we in fact did last year, and we've done in the first year of the new council, and some of it reflects procedures that we had to do as a result of the first council vacancy we had in this term, hence my, the date of this was the end of December 2020, in terms of just, just codifying things such as the term of the deputy mayor, that we would elect a new deputy mayor at the end of every term, in this case, after the November election, our first new meeting, obviously, potential for reelection of deputy mayor if the incumbent deputy mayor is still a member of council. I mean, as I said, stuff that was, been in common practice, though, but never been codified. And so that was my intent on those type of things. I also, there was discussion about altering the device of what would happen if there was a vacancy in the mayor and we had a deputy mayor. I know a previous counselor had suggested a, a scheme of having an acting mayor and a special election. I thought it would just be nice and clean to have a situation where the deputy mayor, just as, as it says in the charter right now, becomes the mayor. And if it's within a certain amount of time, I'm open to suggestions, but I suggested if it's less than a year left in the term, that they, you know, continue, they serve out the mayor's term. If it's more than a year left in the mayor's term, then there's a special election that November to fill the rest of the term, et cetera. And something else that came up, as you can see, was on the second page of my email, in the middle, removal of members of committees and boards, and this And this is something that I encountered in one of my committees where I'm liaison, where we had a member that was absent, and our unfortunate, our understanding was the absence was not excused, and that the committee was, wanted to make sure that we had all the voting members that we possibly had to have a quorum. And it turns out, it was just a difference of opinion of the person giving notice, but the point was, at the end of the day, I didn't feel that the council had significant power if there was ever a situation where there was a member of a board or committee that just decided not to show up. And it was a board or committee that had statute authority where we need a quorum, we need a voting member, because it actually behooves the public to actually have a committee show up, because it's time and money, you know, to go in front of these committees, that the council had clear authority if there ever was a situation where the, a board member was not sort of acting in good faith, that we could remove the person. As I said, just so it was a clear device, because obviously, the boards and the committees have that ability to do that themselves, but I've learned that some of the boards and the committees have sort of gray language when it comes to that, and I didn't want to see a situation where if a board didn't have precise language to remove somebody, and the council didn't have precise language, that it became sort of this ping pong, and we're all standing at attention, wondering what are we going to do with a seat that we should probably vacate if there is a potential candidate out there that would actually fulfill the job to, to the ability that needs to be filled. And that was my intent for that one, and the rest is pretty much self-explanatory. As I said, just pretty much codifying what we've done all year, although I did include just the idea, not married to it, though, but I thought it was just a prudent idea, since we've had two council vacancies last year, and it's usual practice at the beginning of a term to appoint members of the council to liaison appointments. Now, now that we have a situation where every year is legally considered a new term, I thought it prudent that if we ever had a vacancy in the middle of the year, and we brought somebody on council that hypothetically had more of an interest or more of expertise in one committee or board, that the mayor would have the option of shuffling the deck, so to speak, in terms of liaison appointments. Now, I am open to the idea that the mayor has, would have the ability to ask that, and if the sitting incumbent liaison said, no, I'd like to stay with that committee, that would solve the matter, though, so it wouldn't be sort of a unilateral power. But I think it would be a nice gesture, though, so if we had a new counselor that comes on, all of a sudden, they're given a portfolio of liaison appointments that really are not of their interest, though, that I think would just be fair to everybody in the process. As I said, it's not something that I'm completely married to, and I, but at the same time, I thought it would just be something in the interest of fairness that we could consider. And that's all.
Any questions on the proposed charter? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Gunn, I like them. I think they're definitely needed, but specifically with the removal of members of committees, one thing I would like to possibly offer is, one, to make sure it's not politicized, so that we go for a two-thirds majority. That's typically, I think, in the best interest, so that would be a five-two for that to happen, in some kind of appeals or hearing system, so that the right of that committee member can be heard upon the council.
So Counselor Archer and Counselor Gunn, I think it's already actually codified. You as a council passed a code of ethics-
Mm-hmm.
-that has exactly this in it, so theoretically, what you could do is you could just change the charter to adopt the code of ethics, and then you have that three-fifths majority, or you have that two-thirds majority, plus you have the appeal process, plus you have the ability to remove.
But this would be part of, this would be part of the charter, which is then ingrained, where you reference a document that can be changed any given time, to the, when you use that, again, the code of ethics, which can be changed, then that automatically applies to the charter, where I think, where something to this nature written into the charter then makes it concrete.
You could put the code of ethics into the charter, as has been done previously. When I was first on council, the personnel policy was in the charter versus just a personnel policy, or I might be confusing that, but there was something in the charter already that was four or five pages long. You could do that-
Mm-hmm.
-and put it in there.
Counselor Gunn?
I just want to be on record as supporting what Counselor Archer just said, though, and I like the idea of it being in the charter, so it doesn't necessarily change with each council in terms of a code of business, though. If it's codified, like I said, it gives at least, as I said, the one thing that was frustrating about what a lot of these experiences were, that we pretty much had to wait for a legal opinion, and, which meant that any time, if it was a different circumstance, a different city solicitor, we might have had a different outcome, though. So I like the idea of a charter that says what we can and can't do, and giving us clear options when it comes to a situation such as malfeasance, or lack of better term, of a board member, again, with all the due process, and that goes without saying, though. But as I said, having it codified-
Having it.
-and having it in the charter, with all the appeals processes, they're most, most inappropriate. I just want to be on the record of agreeing with Counselor Archer on that point.
Any further questions? Okay, so if there's no objections, these will come forward. Counselor Johnston?
I skipped over my second one. Which, little explanation. I'm basically proposing a charter amendment that would make it so that if you're a former city employee, you can't, how do I describe this? You won't be directly involved with employment that, I could get examples, it's probably easier, but without naming individuals, we've had two examples in the past where, you know, a former employee either became a private consultant or went to work for a different company, and I'm not implying that anything nefarious happened, I just, it raised kind of an alarm to me, among other members of the public, that actually sought me out and said, hey, that's kind of suspect. So, I mean, the attempt here is to, you know, be more transparent, and much like ourselves, if we are no longer city councilors, we cannot be employed by the city for a period of a year. Trying to carry that over to current city employees that are no longer employed by the city, that they won't be in roles to have direct, you know, interaction with city business. So obviously, they could still work for a company, but they wouldn't, you know, let's say it was a bid, for example, they wouldn't be involved with negotiating that. They could obviously work for, we'll say Shaw Brothers, for example. So, I don't know if people have questions, but I think my email kind of sums it up.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Johnston. Is the intent that this is all city employees, or just department heads, or just, is there a level of seniority and responsibility that would put this into effect?
Yeah. I mean, I think initially, I was thinking more, I don't want to single out department heads, but those that have, I mean, interactions, you know, specifically, obviously, if you're, again, we'll use Shaw Brothers, for example, or we'll say a construction company, if you're a former DPW employee, and now you're a truck driver for them, no problem. But if you were, you know, somebody in the hierarchy that has been involved in planning process and all that, obviously, you know, like I said, it can seem suspect if you're on the outside, and you're like, hey, wait, that person used to work for the city, and now they're negotiating contracts with their employer. So, I mean, again, I think even my email to the administrator, I'm not necessarily certain how you legally frame that, and that probably will be for an attorney to figure out, but I think the, I think you get the understanding, and obviously, if there's, you know, legal issues that can come before us. Thank you.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes, I just, I definitely support what Counselor Johnston is suggesting, and I'm pretty sure that legal counsel could craft that in a way where it passes muster, in the sense that any responsible officer of a company that's been recently a city employee would pretty much, it could, it would disqualify that company essentially from doing business with us unless that company had some sort of perhaps device where that officer had to recuse themselves. I'm not sure if that would be keeping fully in the spirit of what Counselor Johnston was saying, though, but if it wasn't, and we, it would just be a blanket sort of, where we don't do business with that company. In the matter, in the matter of ethics, I think it's definitely something worth considering.
Any further discussion on these charter amendments? Hearing no objection, you'll see these charter amendments come forward for first readings, and then subsequent public hearings and final readings. And that ends the charter amendments. That brings us on to item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Keanrath?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nomination petitions, this may be of particular interest to a few councilors up here, but nomination petitions will be available on Monday, July 26, for the following elective offices in the city. City Council, wards 1, 3, and 6 for a three-year term; School Board, wards 1, 3, 5, and 7 for a three-year term; and Wardens and Ward Clerks for wards 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, two-year terms. So a candidate for nomination to one of the above elective offices shall become qualified by filing a nomination petition signed by 35 registered voters from their respective ward. Of course, it's recommended to get a few more, just in case. The deadline to turn in nomination petitions is Friday, September 3, 2021, by 4:00 p.m. Last call on a city RFP opportunity. The city of Saco was issued an RFP, on its bids, an RFP, a webpage for a qualified and experienced firm to conduct a downtown parking study. The study will inventory and map existing public and private parking, analyze parking needs and opportunities, and provide recommendations through the development of a parking plan. The selected consultant must be an expert in compiling and analyzing parking information and data, creating parking demand projections, and making recommendations to address parking concerns, including public policies, programs, and management of public-private partnerships, and bicycle and pedestrian connectivity proposals will be accepted until 11:00 a.m. on Monday, July 26 of this year. Cooling Center, there was some discussion about that at the end of our last meeting. I've worked with Ryan Summer in our Parks and Rec Department to offer a cooling center at the Saco Community Center on days when the National Weather Service issues a heat advisory, watch, or warning. We'll be introducing a communication strategy to get this out to residents, including things that are not just social media or online. The general guidance, however, is for the, the center will be open anytime the National Weather Service issues a heat advisory. Citizens can go to the community center, and be directed to the rooms designated for a cooling center. Any further questions on that? Please let me know, or you can talk to Ryan at Parks and Rec also. A reminder, as was mentioned at the top of the meeting, for some Saco Main Street events coming up, Saco Main Street will be having their classic car show on July 24 from 8:00 to 1:00, and Music in the Park, Inglot. Events are scheduled on Thursday's, Thursday evening, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. through August 12. Couple other items, I just want to point your attention to the sides of the room, the easels with the historic Saco photographs. I borrowed these from Wesley Rounds with the Dyer Library and Saco Museum, so they are on loan from them. We have a number of them, we'll be sort of rotating for council meetings, but I thought it would be a great idea to give just a little bit of additional exposure. These were sitting in the attic over there, so we're going to sort of rotate them around during a few weeks, so people can see some of the historic photographs of Saco. So I know we have some Thorne Academy over here, some City Hall, so interesting photographs, check them out. We'll be having some rotating collection for the time to come, so just to welcome everyone back to our chamber. And with that, I do want to extend a particular thank you to Andrew Dickinson, Emily Roy, and Don Roth for getting this chamber ready for our return with audio upgrades. You've noticed additional screens, and I know Don and his crew were doing some paintwork just in the last couple of days, some more to do to patch things up. So thank you to everyone for getting this chamber ready for our return. I think the sound system seems to be working pretty well tonight, so again, thank you to Andrew, Emily, and Don for all their work in getting this place ready for us to be back after a year and three months or so. Thank you, it's all of that, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Keanrath? Okay, moving on to item 12 of council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment tonight? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Kind of have a running list of things I'd like to address, and that doesn't need to be done tonight. I'm just, there's something I wanted to add to my list a couple of weeks ago, and I just was absent of my mind at the time, but we, as we did tonight, we approve special entertainment permits. And I think everybody that's been up here knows that they're generally just a rubber stamp, that's how I look at it, and it's largely because we have no real understanding of what, you know, that applicant is. I mean, obviously, tonight, you've got the Alex, they've been before us plenty of times. There's no issues there. But several weeks ago, we approved a special entertainment permit for a new business that none of us had any understanding of, and so it occurred to me, why don't we approve the actual initial permits? And, you know, going back and doing some, some research on it, that's how it used to be done, and I don't know when that changed, but I do know that over, again, almost eight years, I've had instances where a permit was approved, and I believe it's done in the clerk's office now, could be wrong, and then they got a special, or before they came for a special entertainment, you know, issue or permit, they, I don't want to call them issues, but say members of the public had issues with that particular business after the fact, then we came and had a special entertainment permit, so it was kind of too late to really deal with any of those issues, I guess, is what I'm saying. So ultimately, I'm just saying that we should take up the state process where, you know, if you're a new business, you're seeking a liquor license, you come for, before council, have the public hearing, and then move to that special entertainment process if you're seeking that additional license. So it's just something in the future to put on before council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment? Okay, moving on to item 13. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So moved. We had ordained that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on entering executive session? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to enter executive session at 9:18. Just FYI, because of the size, we'll be downstairs in the conference room, downstairs in the conference room, due to the size of the folks that are going to be involved. Also, we're going to take a five-minute recess, five-minute recess prior to going downstairs.
For the city administrator to enter into the collective bargaining agreements.
For the command and patrol units.
For the command and control units.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Discussion on entering the agreement for the patrol and command units. A roll call vote. Council Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on adjourning? Roll call vote to adjourn. Council Archer.
Nay.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1. Thank you very much everyone. Have a wonderful evening.